All right, Palermo is absent. Festerson, Harding, Jarom, Melton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Rich Pauls?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I look on the crowd, I'm speechless because I see the mayor here and I see the president has something in his hand, so I think it's just time for me to be quiet and let the two of you take over.
Thank you. I'd like, first of all, if you all can be seated, we have a couple of special items we want to do today for one of our own who is retiring from city clerk's office and...oh, you need to do that first. We'll let you do that first.
Okay. Just real quick, an affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the East Wall legislative chambers.
Thank you. We have a couple of items that we want to do today in honor of one of our own who is going to be retiring from service soon and to begin with, let's start with Mayor Jean Stothard, who would like to come up and say a few words and I think she has a special presentation. Mayor?
Sure, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and I'm just here today to thank Sandy Moses for your 33 years of service to the city of Omaha. You know, everybody needs a go-to person and Sandy, you have been that go-to person for many of us. Along with retired clerk Buster Brown, you have maintained the city's public record and archive. You've improved transparency and access to public records. Technology, I know, over the years you have been here has made that easier, but you have certainly been part of the history of the city of Omaha and I am honored and proud to say that I worked with you as a council member and now as mayor, going into the ninth year that I have been working with you. You will truly be missed and you have done such a great job for the city of Omaha, so best wishes in your retirement. I know you'll have a good time taking care of your dog and I have a special gift to leave with you today, so thank you so much for everything you've done for the city of Omaha.
And Sandy, you're not done yet. First of all, just a couple of words before I read a special proclamation that the city council has put together for you. I don't know, we go back a whole lot of years, Sandy, and I won't say how many, but Sandy has always been one of those who has been like everyone else in the clerk's office in the past and in the present. They have always been in the forefront of making sure that those of us who were journalists at the time had the ability to get the things that we needed to cover a story and now as a city council member, the work that you continue to do with us as council members is superb and first-rate and I'm sure some of my other colleagues will want to say something as well, but we do have a proclamation that I would like to read up and we have one person who is not here today, Councilmember Vinnie Palermo, and we wanted his original signature. We didn't want a copy of his signature, so we will read it, but we will get it to you at a later date when Vinnie gets a chance to sign it. But the proclamation reads as this: Whereas Sandy Moses grew up in Omaha and is a proud North High Viking, and whereas Sandy started working for the city of Omaha in 1972, joining the city clerk's staff in 1973, and whereas after performing several different roles in the city clerk's office, Sandy became deputy city clerk in 1999, and whereas Sandy was recognized as the city of Omaha's Employee of the Year in 1999, and whereas Sandy has been an active participant in the Nebraska Municipal Clerks Association and the Southeast Clerks Association, it's a mouthful, and whereas as deputy city clerk, Sandy contributed to notable process improvements in city clerk's office, including making the city council agendas and supporting documents available on the city's website and streamlining the city council meetings through use of the consent agenda, thank you Sandy, and whereas Sandy possesses an enormous amount of institutional memory and has been a valuable resource for elected officials, and whereas during Sandy's tenure with the city, she served under 15 mayors and 16 city councils and will retire...bless you, honey. And will retire on July 14, 2017, after 44 years of service, and whereas retirement will give Sandy the time she needs to hang out with her canine companion, Aaron, and perfect her golf game, and whereas we thank Sandy for her dedication and service to the city of Omaha and its citizens, now therefore the city council of the city of Omaha salutes Sandy Moses and designates Tuesday, July 11, 2017, as Sandy Moses Day, a witness whereof we have set our hand and cause the official seal of the city of Omaha to be affixed on this 11th day of July, 2017. Bless you and thank you, Sandy Moses. I've covered some of those past city councils, so bless you, Sandy, for your continued commitment. I know other council members might like to say a few words.
We don't have a button.
We don't have a...we need a button, we need to push, but anyway, I'll start with our council vice president, Chris Jarom.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I think my memories of Sandy go back to first orientation at the council when we were getting to an introduction to how this place works and Sandy was in on the orientation and the city clerk's part of it and just this soft-spoken, warm, welcoming person and she's never changed since. And in those years that I've been here with Sandy, we've had some ups and downs in terms of your life journey and the things you've gone through and you've handled the best with the same dignity that you've handled the most challenging times in your life that I've seen and you're just one special person and I'll miss you, seeing you around, and wish you the best in your retirement.
Councilmember Festerson?
Thank you, sure. Is my microphone on? Almost on cue, I think our machines went down. I think it was maybe Sandy sabotaged the microphones for the first part of this meeting because she is so humble and that's one of the things I've always appreciated about her. Never really in the headlines, never really seeking attention, but just does her job so well every day, much like her partner in crime Buster Brown, helped to keep this city and city council ticking and moving every day for so many years. That's something I've always appreciated about you and your personality also. I think you even got bionic hips together, you and Buster, over that timeframe to keep you going. And I also very much appreciate, as we went through this transition and appointed a new city clerk and new city staff, your willingness to stay on to make sure that transition went well. You didn't have to do that, but I know it was important to you and that's something we really appreciate because obviously you care about the city and the future of our city as well and have done so much for our taxpayers that we appreciate it, so I look forward to your ongoing friendship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pauls. Any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. You know, I'm gonna probably say two what I call real good words, simply, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Sandy, thank you for your time and service and I think I'm a little unique in the sense that when I first started working here for the mayor a number of years ago, you were always very helpful and accommodating and I appreciated it then and now I was looking forward to the privilege of being able to work with you on the public side, although it's been kind of short, I appreciate all that you've done in the time that I've been on the council and it's a great honor and that the service that you've given to the city and the city owes you much in return and I wish you the best in your retirement.
Ms. Melton?
Thank you, Sandy, and you're right, all the years that you have spent really dedicated to not just the city, but it's the citizens of Omaha, you've done an excellent job and you're just truly, truly amazing person. I'm glad I've gotten to know you over the last four years and I thank you on behalf of all of those who don't know how much you've done for them over the years. You are very much appreciated and we will miss you a great deal, but congratulations on their retirement and maybe we can get together for a game of golf.
Oh, I'd wanna see that. I was so excited to read the proclamation, I forgot to do the rest of my job, so let me say good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for being here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any electronic devices and Mayor, thank you for being here as well. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President.
Yes, sure. Mr. Festerson?
Thank you. Just a moment, a personal privilege too. I want to recognize another person in the audience here today who I've had some conversations with and I think we all, several of us have, and she's attended many, many meetings. Her name is Kathy Mikolas. Kathy, can you raise your hand, please? There she is. And I spoke with her before the meeting and I think she's working with Building Commission, of which we have two members here, to make sure that when people are watching our meetings on TV, that in fact it is audible and can be heard easily and that council members can be heard easily and especially when they're voting, so let's make sure, reminder to my friends...
Except today, when our machines...
Yeah, except a few minutes ago, which will get fixed. Reminder to my friends also that when we're doing that, to make sure you're speaking with your microphones on and also when you're voting, to make your votes clear so people watching TV can also hear what we're doing for the public interest.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
All right, reconsiderations. The motion and the second were provided at the June 27, 2017 city council meeting. A roll call vote will now be taken to reconsider items six, seven, and eight. Festerson? This is to reconsider.
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Well, you know what, Mr. Jobin has come down. I know that we had discussed earlier that we might need to lay over six, seven, and eight, but it sounds like there may have been some confusion. I'm not sure if that's been worked out yet or not. If I could call Mr. Jobin up to say a few words.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Melton. Larry Jobin, 11440 Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the developer of Anchor Point. With me today is Kyle Bull of ENA Consulting, consulting engineers on this particular project. There may have been some little miscommunication between Public Works and ourselves, but I do believe that we will work that out. I'll kind of explain a little bit about what's going on here and if I need some technical assistance, I've got Kyle here to help me out, so. If you recall from a couple of weeks ago, this is the cul-de-sac we're talking about, which is 173rd Circle. This is the plat, nothing changes with respect to the plat. This is Exhibit A, of course, to the subdivision agreement, of course, it's the plat that was also approved at the prior city council meeting. This is the paving exhibit for that particular circle and you'll notice it was kind of an elongated circle that was being called here for the paving, on the paving exhibit. This is the exhibit that we were swapping out and this would be the replacement exhibit, which shows the larger landscaped area and if you recall, these were the exhibits that we had at the last meeting and this is a standard template cul-de-sac. And what we pointed out at the prior city council meeting is that the landscaped area, just the landscaped area alone, has the same radius of an entire standard template cul-de-sac. So in addition to the standard template, we have an additional 20 feet beyond that for the roadway or the paving surfaces to drive on. Kyle's done all the analysis, it, a full-sized truck can make all the movements necessary. I think the only issue that we had with Public Works possibly is the actual design of this landscaped area and I just had a discussion with Ryan Haas saying that when it comes to the actual, you know, specifications of the construction, if they would like an additional four to six feet apron around here that has more of a, not a hard curve, but maybe more of a soft curve and then you have four to six feet of additional paved area so a truck could clearly make the radiuses, but my understanding is they can make those radiuses anyway based upon this design. We, I committed to Ryan that we would work on the exact paving specifications when the plans go in for approval with two Public Works. So I'm hopeful that we can move this forward. I mean, with the Fourth of July last week and having a two-week delay, our guys, of course, want to get moving on this particular development, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Kyle's here to address any issues you have. There was one last thing I would mention. The Law Department came up with some additional language with the subdivision agreement that says the association shall be responsible for any and all care, maintenance, repair, replacement, or removal of the landscape meetings within the streets and cul-de-sac. We're okay with that language, that's what we agreed to at the prior meeting, so with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Could I call Ms. Taylor up?
Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department?
And I just want to ask, the amendments that we have attached here right now, are those sufficient for us to pass it today?
I believe the amendments you have attached are the exhibit that Mr. Jobin provided and the language he quoted.
Right.
I'm not sure, I'm not clear on the amendments that you have in front of you, so...
Well, they were requested to be drafted by you, so whatever you submitted.
Yes, I drafted the language that Mr. Jobin just quoted and Mr. Jobin has just confirmed that he is okay with that language. As far as the exhibit...
Right.
Yes.
And then you stated that...
And then there was needed to be replacing an exhibit that Mr. Kyle provided.
So have you gotten them? Okay, have those ever been given to the clerk's office?
Not as yet, because I hadn't had confirmed from Mr. Jobin that that language was okay and there was, I believe, as he said, some confusion between Public Works as to whether or not the exhibit was the correct exhibit.
... Two weeks.
We laid over to the end of the agenda. No?
I mean, is this something that could be done in the next 45 minutes? I mean, we can't pass something that's not attached. I don't even think, I mean, we can't do that. Larry, do you have, Mr. Jobin, do you have something to say?
Well, you and I talked on Friday saying that nothing had been presented.
Identify yourself.
Oh, Larry Jobin, 11440 Weston Road. You and I spoke and said nothing had been done. I called Paul and Jennifer and they said, no, we'll do that after the council meeting, is what I was understood to be the case, and it would be a substitute exhibit, which is very, very minor in the sense that the plat is exactly the same, the paving plan is exactly the same except for that particular cul-de-sac and the design of it, but it was all presented two weeks ago. It was discussed two weeks ago. We agreed that all the maintenance would be performed by the association, so I'm not sure why we don't think we could substitute a page that we all knew was coming and was actually in somewhat, in some respects, approved two weeks ago when you made the amendment on the floor.
Okay, I'm gonna just cut this short.
Yeah.
Can we substitute what Mr. Jobin has in his hand that was just presented to us as the exhibit and that's what we're gonna vote on, then I'll make, then can I make an oral motion to change the language that was just stated by Mr. Jobin and confirmed by Ms. Taylor that we agreed to? And those are the only changes. Are we allowed to do that without laying this over for another two weeks?
What is the amendment to?
Amendment to the subdivision agreement. I can tell you it's the paving exhibit.
Why are we doing this right now?
It would be...
We can establish procedure here.
It would be an amendment to Exhibit B, the storm sewer and paving exhibit. So it would be a replacement of that exhibit.
Why do we have to delay this two weeks? Why can't we lay this over for one week?
I'll change my motion to one week.
Second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to lay over for one week.
And this is for items six, seven, and eight?
This is for items six, seven, and eight.
And I'm just, I'm gonna ask that the two parties work together to make sure this is done by Thursday, not next Tuesday, but by Thursday, like 48 hours, if I could. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to lay over two weeks, I mean, lay over for one week. There are no lights that I see, so roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item nine, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Blazek Acres, replat one, located southeast of 126th Street and Bennington Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine is today. Are there any proponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, Kevin Anderson, the applicant, AND E-R-S-E-N, 17024 Military Road. I don't have anything to add that's not in your report from the Planning Department. Would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Moving approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item nine, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item nine approved, six to zero. Item 10, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Antler View East, located southwest of 180th Street and West Maple Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 is today. Are there any proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 10, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 10 approved, six to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7E, Agenda Item 11 shall be laid over two weeks to July 25, 2017, for publication and public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7E, Agenda Items 12 and 13 shall be laid over two weeks to July 25, 2017. Item 14, an application to approve a Class I liquor license for Collective Impact Group LLC, doing business as Lolo's Chicken and Waffles, 7051 Ames Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Tim Clark, 7051 Ames Avenue.
It's not my phone. It just said, be ready to evacuate, okay? But just here for, if there's any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Clark, if we get an opportunity, this is your opportunity to tell us what all you're doing with the new Lolo's Chicken and Waffles.
Yes, so Lolo's Chicken and Waffles is a national chain and it was just purchased by a group of local individuals, Lolo's Chicken and Waffles on 7051 Ames Avenue. Have some of the best chicken and waffles in Omaha, Nebraska, I would say in the Midwest, and so it's under new management and new ownership and we're real excited about this adventure and really turning that restaurant into a destination restaurant. So under the sound of my voice, anyone that's here, you're welcome to come to Lolo's Chicken and Waffles and today only, 10% off, okay? Shameless plug, okay? Shameless plug.
Thank you. There are no more, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Better approach it now, so we don't have to evacuate.
Moved and seconded to approve item 14, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 14 approved, six to zero. Item 15, a request to appoint Sherry M. Flora Chinger as manager of A&amp;S Inc., doing business as 13th Street Brickhouse for their Class C liquor license located at 2202 South 13th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 is today. Are there any proponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, nothing as enticing as 10% off food, but Rodney Dawk, 1403 Farnham Street, on behalf of the applicant, A&amp;S Inc. Nothing in addition to add to what's already been presented, but I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 15, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 15 approved, six to zero. Item 16, a request to approve a special designated liquor license for Jack's Inc., doing business as Perry's Place, 9652 Mockingbird Drive, for a concert on July 22, 2017, from noon to midnight with music until midnight.
Public hearing on agenda item number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
Chad Perry, 9652 Mockingbird Drive, here representing Perry's Place. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Second, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 16 approved, six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda item number 17 was held on June 27, 2017. Second, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 17 approved, six to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items number eight, numbers 18 through 33 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. And for the council, we are going to take item number 21 off of the consent. Are there any proponents or opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Moved to approve 18 through 20 and 22 through...
33. Moved and seconded to approve items 18 through 20 and 21 through 33, 22 through 33. No lights, uh, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Items 18 through 33 minus 21 are approved, six to zero. Item 21, a resolution to approve the cost share allowing for only 50% of the total cost of construction be specially assessed to the property owners within certain seven neighborhood roadway improvement districts created during the drafting but prior to the approval of a policy allowing for cost sharing in such districts.
Public hearing on agenda item number 21 is today. Proponents, please. Are there any proponents who wish to be heard?
It's people in favor.
People in favor?
In favor of the cost.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Well...
Name and address for the record. Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, over.
Yep.
How far over?
Perfect.
To the mic, there you go.
Thank you, thank you. My name is Jeanette Benson. I live on the corner of 94th and Oak Streets, which means I am on the hook for up to four times what some of the other residents are on the hook for at this point in time. Now, the splitting of the two streets was done, if I may say, without many of the residents' knowledge or approval, including mine. I've been told that it's too late for anything to be done about that because it's on its way. What I would ask is to take a look at the houses in that neighborhood. They are not million-dollar homes. They're anywhere from $120,000 maybe to $250,000, maybe a few above that. And according to what was sent out to me by the city, my bill would be $16,000, which is pretty high, I think, considering that many of, that some of those residents are going to pay $4,000 or, if this goes through, $2,000. So I just wanted to say, anything you guys can do to help us out, we would really, really appreciate it. That's really all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you guess your exact address, please?
Yes, three zero zero nine South Ninety-Fourth Street. Okay? Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Clark. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be, are those in favor?
Hi, Ryan Palmer, thirteen twenty-six Ridgewood Avenue. I am a proponent of city cost share and city funding going towards roads. However, I live on an SID where fifty percent cost share is just not going to be good enough. We've got a huge drainage pipe that's going to go along the side and add half again as much of the cost to a normal street, and our initial estimate from Public Works Department is eighteen thousand dollars per homeowner. And we could probably stomach something that's closer to twelve thousand dollars, but fifty percent cost share gets us to eighteen thousand. It would be thirty-six thousand per homeowner. And I'm here on behalf of all twenty-one property owners. In fact, I sent a memo to most of you via certified mail in the last few weeks, just explaining why our situation is unique and it shouldn't be treated like all these other SIDs. And so, here you are, ready to, you know, move this forward with this fifty percent thing. And I just came today to say, there's a lot more to talk about this situation. And if moving forward with this today keeps us from getting more than fifty percent cost share on our particular SID for other reasons that are yet to be decided by the powers that be, then I would, I would switch to be an opponent of this. But if we still have, like, the opportunity to go back to this SID and get more than fifty percent of the city, the city cover more than fifty percent, then I'll stay a proponent of this. But I had to come today because if you just say fifty percent and that's the end of the deal, every single one of these twenty-one property owners who's willing to put up half the cost of the street will be very upset and feel like they're being taken advantage by a city system that is making them pay for the cost of a drainage pipe that is serving over eighty acres of surrounding area and more than a hundred lots that are outside of this SID. And so, I provided that memo and an addendum, which basically has a list of all the reasons that you can give your constituents or anybody else as to why public funds are justified in the use of this situation. We've got a huge drainage cost. It services a school. There's parkways and sidewalks on both sides of the street. It's a very valuable street, an improved street. It's going to see even more volume than it already does. And so, here I am saying, our property owners are willing to contribute about what everybody else is going to have to pay for their street, but these other costs are going to drive it up to where it's not equitable or fair. And so, if you have any questions for me, I mean, I'm here to kind of clarify that, why it's different, because I think any fair-minded person who read that memo would come to the conclusion that something needs to be done here to make a workable solution. You've got a hundred percent participation from property owners, but they don't want to be taken advantage of. And so, I just, I guess I'm here as a proponent as long as our particular SID cost share is still open. And so, if I can get clarification on that, then...
We'll get to that in just a second, okay?
Okay. Thirteen twenty-six Ridgewood Avenue.
Twenty-six, okay. Thanks. Is that into your testimony?
For now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Don Bosworth, three zero zero six South Ninety-Fourth Street. I'm amazed that there's so few people here. With as many people's effects on Oak and Ninety-Fourth Street alone, there's twenty-two houses. But anyway, I stand in support of this. It'll certainly help me quite a bit. And I'm sure, I mentioned it to a number of my neighbors, and they were all in favor of it.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Jaram.
Yes. In hearing the testimony today, particularly from Mr. Palmer, who is in one of the street improvement district petition groups that would be covered by item number twenty-one, what that particular street improvement district application group is concerned about is what I hear is equity. And I want to make sure that we answer Mr. Palmer's questions, as well as address a little bit about what happens by vote, moving these forward, if that happens today by vote, and what that means to these different groups. Because Ridgewood is, as you heard, at the base of a basin south of Pacific Street that runs southwesterly from the Loveland School down to Eighty-Fourth Street at Cedar roughly. And it handles so much more drainage water than, than just the people who live on the street. They're concerned that the cost of putting in this street would be a factor of far more expense, as you heard, than other people who have streets put in because the size of the storm sewers and their respective cost depend upon their size and the type of effort and equipment it takes to put that sewer in. And so, you have, as I've learned this morning from Public Works, you have street improvement districts that have twenty-four-inch storm sewers. You have some others with thirty-six-inch storm sewers, and you have yet others forty-two inches and even bigger storm sewers. And so, their fear is, by seeing this preliminary estimate, is, uh-oh, this could be a deal breaker. So, the first question that this group in Ridgewood had for their street improvement district is, if by voting to move this forward today passes, A, are they precluded from seeking, or the city precluded from agreeing, if it so chose, either by us or by the administration and then us, a greater cost share? So, Mr. Stube, would you address that question, please?
Bob Stube, Public Works. I don't believe it does preclude them.
Thank you.
Because typically, again, is that we would look at the total cost of the project and therefore come up with a fifty percent cost share. The total cost of the project has not been determined yet because typically that is not done until after the design is complete to look at all of the known and unknown conditions that exist within that particular location. And then, the final outcome would be actually the, when it would be put out for bids to make a determination as far as what the lowest bid would be.
So, if, to be more clear on the record, the design specifications call for a storm water pipe that is of the size that Mr. Palmer was concerned about that would create this higher cost, voting yes to move this forward, is the city and the street improvement district for Ridgewood locked in on a fifty percent of that total, or is there opportunity for there to be this additional cost share discussion?
Well, there's always an opportunity to sit down with the stakeholders, with the design team, and with city staff to review just exactly what is, what is being requested by the property owners. And keep this in mind, this is an area where it's got a combination of culverts and ditches and existing storm sewers and sidewalks and, you know, areas between the edge of the roadway and the sidewalks. And so, until, you know, again, we go through and make a determination as far as what's going to be required with the street improvement district, we don't know what's all included, sprinkler systems and everything else. But again, the property owners have a say with regard to what is to be included within the district and what's not included. So, if there's driveways that might be impacted and things like that. I'm not, I'm not answering your questions based on you shaking your head.
You're not answering the questions. Because the operative question of causing the greatest amount of heartburn, in my estimation, for the neighborhood petitioners is, if the city determines you need one of these big pipes rather than a twenty-four-inch pipe, and you, are you going to be seeking fifty percent cost share, and are you locked in on that if this advances today?
All costs are included in the project. And then, there's a cost share based on what all of the costs, what all the total costs would be. That would be shared equally between the city. And so, there are standards with regard to what the city does when it comes to sizing storm sewers because of street improvement districts.
Thank you. I, I don't know what my colleagues think, but I don't think that I'm getting an answer. To me, it was a yes or a no. And I know there are circumstances unique to each one of these, but the question was, is it fifty-fifty on each of these regardless of the spec sewer piping?
Every district that we've done to date, based on a waiver by the city, has been a fifty-fifty cost share.
So, you're saying it's a fifty-fifty as this moves forward, regardless of the size of the pipe?
Again, within the new policy.
I know what the new policy, we'll get to that in a minute.
Okay.
But this was, this is, this is no new policy yet, and this would be advanced before there is a policy. So, we're talking about, in the absence of a policy, I hear you saying it's fifty-fifty with regard to the sewer pipe.
That's been the precedent. That's been established so far. That's what we submitted for consideration, is fifty-fifty.
Mr. Kratz, the city attorney.
Yes, sir. Paul Kratz, city attorney.
Based upon this proposal as it's written, and what you just heard from Mr. Stube, I'd ask your legal opinion on whether the petitioners from the Ridgewood Street Improvement District, that is on, one of the seven on the agenda day within item twenty-one, whether they would have any ability to, to obtain if this, a majority of the council were to support such, for additional cost share on this project, for example, the sewer piping?
Under the existing language of the resolution, no, they would not. It would simply be fifty percent cost share.
Yeah.
That would not necessarily preclude a later negotiation for some different sharing. But right now, the audience is pretty clear, it's a fifty percent share.
So, there was another meeting today, Mr. Palmer. There was an earlier meeting where we went through our agenda. And what I was told at the earlier meeting was, there would be another opportunity for this discussion. And I said, "Well, I'll wait to hear on the record," because usually, as a lawyer in my other life, I prefer to see things in writing. But I was going to give the opportunity for the record to be made today so the city would have a commitment firmly that confirmed what I thought I heard this morning, that there was this willingness to have further discussion. But what I just heard is that absent some procedural move on item number thirty-four, that would amend that to allow such flexibility for projects already in the queue, like item twenty-one, you would be locked in with your group at fifty percent cost share regardless of the size of the sewer. So, I am going to move to amend item twenty-one to remove the Ridgewood Avenue SID petition and give it a two-week layover so that your group can decide what it wants to do in light of what you just heard. Why don't you come down? I see you jumping at your seat.
Ryan Palmer, thirteen twenty-six Ridgewood Avenue. I thought I heard at the end of Mr. Kratz's explanation that there, the, could you clarify again, the end of the explanation? It was that the policy doesn't allow for you to say yes now, but it doesn't necessarily shut the door for future discussions?
Paul Kratz, city attorney. That's correct. At any time in the future, a year from now or two years from now, you could always have some discussion, separate and independently of this particular resolution.
Well, it would probably be within, like, the next, you know, calendar year.
Well, if you could have a seat. Just thinking about what, the motion, I'm going to withdraw the motion I just made and say, it is quite confounding to me to have sat through the discussion I did this morning with my colleagues, to now hear what I think is substantially different than what was said this morning with regard to the ability of the city to consider whether this is fair or not. And what I just heard is, as with any policy, the city considers that there's always these exceptions to the rule. And if you have one blanket rule, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be equitable to everybody. And in this particular case, you heard about a seventy-plus acre drainage basin with a people, a group of people who wish to pay their equitable share, who will be billed for drainage piping that benefits an area far, far beyond the narrow two-block area approximately of the street to be improved from the gravel mess that it is today to a permanent concrete street. And so, I, I think it's so inequitable or inequitable that, to me, it gives me pause as to whether we should move forward on item twenty-one until we know what happens on item thirty-four. So, procedurally, I'd ask the council for your indulgence to allow item twenty-one to be laid over on the agenda till immediately being considered after item thirty-four.
If there's no objection, that's fine.
There's no objection.
Any objection?
Okay. Mr. Festerson, you were next on the, did you want to?
Do you have one question? Yeah, just, I just want to make sure if we, are there any projects on twenty-one, though, that maybe don't fit into thirty-four that we would be affecting? I mean, because I thought that's why we were doing twenty-one, was there maybe were some agreements made by the city with some of these other projects, that we wanted to make sure we pass those, had that done, then we start with new slate with the new policy moving forward. And so, I think if you do it the other way, we're going to really complicate those. And there may have been promises made to some of these people that were, like, doing it that way. And I guess, if you don't mind, I think Heather Tippy Pierce can clarify that for us, if you don't mind me calling her up.
Well, I think that, I think the question is for the law, by holding twenty-one till item thirty-four is considered, what impacts could it possibly have? And from a legal perspective?
Well, yes, anything that, that...
She's not a lawyer.
Well, I understand that, but she's the one that's made the promises to people, I believe, in some of these other projects, that if they were made, would be impacted. If we pass thirty-four first, then all the people in twenty-one will have to follow the policy in thirty-four. And I think that there have already been kind of promises made and votes taken. So, they, that's why they wanted to get those done. I think what you might want to do is take this neighborhood off and pass it after you pass thirty-four, but I don't think all the other neighborhoods, which could be negatively affected by it.
You could remove the neighborhood, but you'd have to bring it back as a separate resolution.
Yeah, I, I think that, if you could explain a little better for me, Councilmember Melton, what, what harm is it to people who have been, made these promises on these other six?
That's why I'm asking Heather Tippy Pierce to explain it, because she can actually give you the details as opposed to me giving you my general understanding.
Well, I think she could provide benefit of the department's perspective, but in terms of the, procedurally, how we as a council consider these items, I think I would defer to the ultimate arbiter, the city attorney, is to say, is there any harm by just waiting till item thirty-four is considered?
When, what, well, you can get that, but what I'm saying is, I think, based upon particular SIDs, that Heather Tippy Pierce can tell you why that could harm those particular SIDs, that Mr. Kratz may not have the facts to be able to answer that accordingly. And Mr. Kratz, please correct me if I'm wrong.
All right. Fair enough.
Paul Kratz, maybe I should weigh in a little bit. I don't have all the facts, I got to agree. But it seems like if you put twenty-one after thirty-four, thirty-four becomes our ordinance and applicable, and I think that cost share is twenty-five percent as opposed to fifty percent, so that would then be the standard. Then, if you had twenty-one in there, I don't have the exact language in front of me, but you'd probably have to retype or redo that language so it excludes what you've done in thirty-four. I think that's what councilman members trying to say is, you have some more complications if you do thirty-four first and then twenty-one.
Well, I, with all due respect, and you said you hadn't seen the particulars, but the item thirty-four would actually be fifty percent for street improvement districts. Mr. Palmer, why don't you come up back up? Because I might get to what you wanted to do, that's why.
Ryan Palmer, thirteen twenty-six Ridgewood Avenue.
I think, I think what I'm hearing from Ms. Melton, and I think I might agree with that, is that we just amend your one off of this one.
Yeah.
Is the best procedural way to go about it.
We don't, we don't really lose anything because the new policy is about SIDs, so we would at least have that.
Correct. All right.
And I think you're concerned, are they road improvement districts? The math would be different or something.
Thank you. Thank you. I would move to amend item twenty-one to remove the Ridgewood SID and bring it back in two weeks as its own resolution.
Second.
Moving and seconded to amend item twenty-one.
Took me a while, a little slow.
To amend item twenty-one to take out Ridgewood?
Yes.
Okay, to take out Ridgewood. Mr. Festers?
Thanks. Yeah, I support that amendment.
Thanks. Yeah, I support that amendment and that solution to this particular issue. And I think it was important that we do that for Ridgewood, given the unusual circumstances that we're experiencing. I was going to comment more on the general nature of this ordinance, Number 21. So, we thought it was Sandy Moses Day in the City of Omaha, but it's also an unimproved street day in the City of Omaha, it seems, between this item and also Item Number 34. And there is a relationship, which is what? Which is the push and pull we're kind of getting through here. But I think Number 21 is appropriate in the respect that as we entertain Number 34 in our new policy for the city to cost share on unimproved streets, there are a group of streets that have been through the process and are pretty far in the process that have had this expectation of also getting the 50%, like some have to date. And I think by doing what Number 21 proposes to do, it clears the decks and also gives them the same consideration as other recent street products have received. So, I think it's important we do approve Number 21 today, absent Ridgewood for further consideration. And I just want my folks to know that it does include North 89th Circle, north of Bird Street, which has been in the process and pretty far in the process for quite some time, and wanting to make sure they did, in fact, get the 50% match from the city that many others have received. So, that is listed on here as well. Mr. Curtis, just a question for you then, too. Similar to how we talked about this morning in terms of the funding source for this. So, I'll have, I think I'll have more questions and maybe some comments when we entertain Number 34, which is the bigger policy. But this one, as I mentioned, just kind of clears the decks. And the funding source, though, is the same funding source presumably for future unimproved streets and the matching funds we have available for that, which is in the capital improvement plan, right?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. The way this one's set out is half of it, as you probably are aware, goes to special assessment because it will be assessed to the property owners. The other half is coming, in this case, from the bond funds that were made available through the CIP in Project 512. There's about $820,000 available in '17, about $808 in '18. So, it'll use all of that $820, plus about $300,000 of the $800 for the following year.
Yes. So, that was the point I wanted to make, is that by doing this today, we are exhausting, more than exhausting, the current funds available in 2017 to provide these matches. And I'll have, I think, additional comments on this when we talk about Number 34. But key not only to this conversation is the funding share and equitable use of this new policy, which is an important question to delve into. But just as important is the funding available to do these things, because absent the funding, this isn't making a dent in our $300 million challenge we have here if we're talking about a handful of projects each year. But I do think, as I mentioned earlier, that by passing Number 21 today, it does, it is a place to start, and it clears the deck on those that are already very far in the process. So, I seconded the motion and will approve if the item is amended. Thank you.
Well, let me... I got a couple of other lights on. Ms. Melton, did you have any comment?
On the amendment?
On the amendment? Okay. Okay. Mr. Paul's on the amendment?
I just have a question about what I'm looking at. The seven, all I need to know is the seven neighborhoods, we're going to pull one out. What I'd like to have displayed orally, because we have people watching it, those neighborhoods that will be in this. I don't have that. I don't have the attachment. So, if somebody would just tell me what neighborhoods are left, because I know we have some people out there watching, I just want to make sure they understand. Do you have those? I don't know if those should be announced or not. The reason I'm saying that, because I'm looking at some of those neighborhoods, I just want to make sure they realize we are talking about them. If not, I can live with it.
Okay.
Yeah, well, moving seconded to amend out Ridgewood. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Harding?
I just want to make sure I'm clear. We're just voting?
On the amendment to remove only Ridgewood?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Amendment is approved, six to zero.
As amended?
Is there a second? Second. As amended. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 21 is approved as amended, six to zero. Item 34, Resolution to Approve a Policy for Maintenance of Roadways Within the City of Omaha as a replacement to all previous city policies regarding roadway maintenance.
Public hearing, public hearing on Agenda Item Number 34 is today. Proponents, please.
Thank you. My name is Robert Peterson. I live at 20985 Rawhide Road in Elkhorn slash Omaha. I have an objection to the resolution. I sent a letter out to the council and the mayor yesterday.
No, this is pro...
Oh, you're pros?
Yeah, pro.
Oh, you don't want me here.
Okay. All right. Well, hold on. Sit there, because we'll get to you next. All right? Proponents, please.
Bob Stube, Public Works. Hopefully, I can be a little clearer in my comments relative to the new policy that's in front of you today. But before I get started, I also want to thank the members of the advisory group that helped us develop this policy. Mary Baliff, I don't believe any of them are here today, but Mary Baliff was our facilitator. Precious McKesson, Julie Smith, Dean Holdsworth, John Fohlenkamp, Senator John McColister, and also former council member Franklin Thompson was a member. And then we had Cassie Pavan, Todd Fitzler, myself, part of the committee. And we also had assistance from Heather Tippy Pierce, Alan Thielen, and Austin Rousier. To start out with, the policy was kind of started back in late last year, where the mayor essentially invited individuals to become part of this group. And so, the first meeting took place in January of this year. We had multiple meetings, developed the policy, provided the information to the city council's Public Works Committee meeting, and had that information available to all council members. And so, before you, today is essentially the policy. The purpose of the committee was to essentially establish a policy that is equitable to all citizens, that it is financially sustainable, and then also provides an opportunity to improve deteriorating infrastructure. There were four goals that were essentially established. One is cost-sharing recommendations. Two was consideration for high-poverty areas. Three was prioritization of the projects themselves, and then also development of communication between the city and the neighborhoods that are impacted by this. All committee discussion was framed with two assumptions, which was to have all costs to construct the project be included, and then also property owners will participate in the cost of the projects. I know there's a question this morning with regard to kind of, does this mandate, it does not mandate that citizens have to do anything different than what they've been doing previously. It establishes essentially a policy so that we don't have to come in front of the council every time when there's consideration for cost sharing that we have to ask for a waiver. This essentially establishes that policy going forward. So, the process with regard to essentially creating districts and going through the petition process, coming in front of the council numerous times, that all stays in place. It really comes down to the bottom line as being kind of that cost-sharing mechanism. With that, I want to turn it over to Todd Fitzler. He's going to go through more of the details with regard to what those cost shares are, how we're going to be communicating this to the public, and also with regard to the prioritization process.
Todd Fitzler, Public Works. I guess what I wanted to share was some of the primary goals that we met with on our Citizens Advisory Committee and that we came up with. And there was three really major... Excuse me, I'm a bit out of breath. I realized about the time I went to present this that I left it up on my desk, so forgive me. I don't have it memorized. There was three major considerations that we worked at length with the advisory committee on. That was the cost-sharing recommendations, the consideration for prioritization of the projects, and then how to address some of the poverty or high-poverty areas for additional help. So, I want to go over those high points with you. So, with regard to a cost-sharing for the RMD, that's the Maintenance District of the asphalt coming in, we agreed upon a 25% total cost share by the city, and 75% would be borne by the residents. After that, the city will provide ongoing maintenance of the road through the end of its serviceable life. And if anybody has questions about this, as I finish up, exactly what I mean by serviceable life, I'd be happy to answer those. Through a Street Improvement District, that's the concrete with the inlets and the storm sewers, it would be a 50-50 cost share. City paying 50%, residents paying 50%. That brings that street up to what we call a serviceable standard, and it would be a city street maintained for the life forever, essentially, for that concrete. With either one of these, it's kind of intended to be a one-time offer. So, if folks decide to go with the roadway maintenance district, the asphalt, that's it. That's their decision. 15, 20 years later, when that product reaches the end of its serviceable life, then they would have to decide what to do, but would not be able to create another policy, or, excuse me, another petition to come in here and look at that. For high-poverty areas, we looked at census tract areas where 30% or greater of the households are below the poverty level. An additional 15% reduction would be made in those cases. So, if you chose an RMD, the city would pay 40% instead of 25. If you chose an SID, the city would pay 65% instead of 50. For census tracts where 15 to 29.99% of households are below the poverty level, an additional 10% cost would occur. So, again, that would take that from 25 to 35% city contribution, and from 50 to 60 on the SID to handle those high-poverty areas. The prioritization, we spent quite a deal of time addressing and trying to make very simple, essentially. So, we really have two priorities that we reached here. The first one is that for streets prior to 2015 that received a PESR rating and were no longer serviceable and were returned to the gravel road, so those were reclaimed, is the term that you've heard us say before, those would immediately go to the top of the list. So, if anybody lives on a street that was reclaimed, that was not notified of that, and it just happened, if they submit, they will automatically be put into the next year's design queue for improvement. That second tier is where our point system came into play. So, really, we would take all the RMD and SID applications for that year, and we would look at a 20-point system. 10 of those points are strictly related to the PESR rating, which is just the condition of the concrete or the asphalt. Excuse me, I shouldn't have said concrete. The condition of the street, the asphalt in this condition. So, 0 through 10, the worse your street is, the higher you score. So, that's half the points. The other 10 would be looked at for connectivity. So, by that, I mean, if you think about some of the streets we've done in the past, 113th Street that we did last summer was essentially a cul-de-sac with 13 homes on it. So, it serviced 13 homes. There were homes in the Rock Brook area that connected to the fabric of the neighborhood that essentially served almost 100 homes. So, they would be scored based on that level of connectivity. Do they provide access to a school, to a library? How many other homes do they service, things like that? So, that would be the other 0 through 10 points, the other half. Now, with that in mind, you could have a home that fell on a cul-de-sac with two houses or three houses on it. They would never score points. So, for, to help address those folks so that they don't somehow get caught here and never get to the top of the list, they would be given one point annually. So, every year that went by, they would be given an additional point until they scored high enough to come in and get that city help with that particular street, to not get left out of it. So, that's the scoring. And then the last thing I want to address is communication. And this came up following the creation of the policy, as we were looking at how to notify our residents. I think we all agree over the years that reclaiming a street without telling anybody was not a popular idea. So, I want to kind of go through with you how we intend to help citizens, first of all, know whether or not they're on an unimproved street, and then how to get the word out of what's coming next. So, first of all, we are developing a webpage, and I know that you've requested this in the past, that would show the PESR ratings. So, citizen could go onto a GIS layer, type in their address, bring up their street, and it would show them whether or not they lived on an unimproved street, and then what that PESR rating was. So, they'd have that access available to them, would be updated annually, and would be available to every citizen. So, that's the first step. Notifications. For a PESR rating of 1 to 2, which essentially is what we kind of call a minefield, or essentially, you know, a road that is just a patchwork, quilt of patches and things like that, it was hard for us to look at that and decide where we would begin and end those maintenance efforts. So, for those folks that lived on a street with a PESR rating of 1 or 2, we would send out letters to everyone explaining, "You live on an unimproved street. Your PESR rating is such that there are no further maintenance efforts that can be made on that street." It would be hard to determine where to stop and start. It would have a link to where the policy is. Here's where you reach out if should you want to create a petition to look at improving your street. That would be, excuse me, for a PESR of 1 to 2. For the rating of 3 or 4, those are just below the maintenance threshold, we would and intend to, this summer, should you pass this policy, to go out on all those streets with a PESR rating of 3 or 4 and do what we call one final pass of maintenance. We would go out on those streets, fix any existing potholes, do what we could to patch those streets, and at that same time, provide a letter to those residents indicating, "You live on a street that we just did our last service on. Here's the link to the petition process. Here's, you know, walking you through everything that you need to do." But they would have that last repair that would last them another year or two until they'd have to really start thinking about this process. And then for the remainder of the streets, for everybody else that lives on an unimproved street, they would have, in this case, a PESR rating of 5 or above, we would send out a letter just to let those residents know. You do live on an unimproved street, as it is right now. It's still in good enough shape that we're maintaining it. But someday, when it reaches an unserviceable level, here is the link to the policy. Here's how it will work when someday you need to improve your own street. And that way, every person that lives on an unimproved street in this city will have received notification of such, and they'll know where they're at, and they can look up their PESR rating and move forward. So, those are the highlights, Director, in case you can think of anything that I possibly omitted. And with that, I'm available for questions or comments.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none of their yes? Proponent?
Ryan Palmer, 1326 Ridgewood Avenue. I just wanted to come up here again and say that I certainly am a proponent of developing a process like this. And I've read through the policy three times. And I think they did a heck of a good job with a very difficult situation. And they did a lot of balancing, and they did a very nice balancing act where others thought there would be no balance and were very skeptical. And so, I wanted to just step up and commend the committee for the creation of this policy. I think they covered a lot of bases. I just, in our particular situation, there's still something missing. And we talked a lot about cost share for low-income housing neighborhoods, and that is more than acceptable. But I think, you know, given the discussion and the facts of our situation, there probably needs to be something, something along the lines of when the critical infrastructure costs bring the project to be no longer equitable. I mean, we're basically in the same financial situation as these lower-income areas. It's like, we can only afford so much, too. And so, I am just hoping that in this process, either you can make this policy say something that's like, okay, those critical infrastructure costs that are more than half again as much as the rest of the project can be removed. Or if that's not a viable path, then perhaps we can develop some sort of template percentage that could be used in situations like this, whether it's 75, 25. 75, 25 would make the math correct in our situation and bring it back down to comparable levels. Because we're paying, our bid is for $18,000. It could get higher. You know, $12,000 is kind of where, you know, it's in the middle of what other people are getting. And so, I just wanted to say I'm a proponent. I think they did a great job. They're missing one element for situations like ours. And when our SID was created, I came, my neighbor came, presented a map. We showed the drainage issue. We showed that it was a unique situation. It should be treated differently. Councilmember Thompson at the time says, "I've been in those discussions. They definitely know about Ridgewood. Something is going to happen different for Ridgewood. I can assure you, they know about Ridgewood." Well, I read it three times. And the only place where our situation is given any kind of credit is in the prioritization because it's near a school. They don't talk about the huge drainage expense, and they don't talk about the expense that's related to that block. And we sent out the memo. We got a response from Public Works that basically ignored our main point of, "This is a unique situation. It needs different treatment." And so, I'm just optimistic that, you know, we can find a win-win situation where, you know, you can come up with a percentage or some way to make it equitable for our particular SID. They've done a lot of work. A slight change could make it a win-win situation for our district, too.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Did you wish to make a comment, Todd?
Todd Fitzler, Public Works. I just wanted to...
I just wanted the council to be aware that we were aware of the Ridgewood situation and of the potential for high drainage costs. So we went out and analyzed SIDs and looked at average-sized drain pipes and maximum-sized drain pipes and such. And so there is a provision within this policy that if the drain pipe or the, you know, the size of the pipe would exceed a 42-inch pipe, that the city would pay for the incremental difference above that. But within that range, that 42-inch is a very common size, 42, 36, and those sizes are very common throughout SIDs in the metro area. So, that provision is in there, that was with the idea of handling situations like the folks on Ridgewood for that drainage. I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Sing?
Ryan Palmer, 1326 Ridgewood Avenue. I'm still a proponent, but I, we're a two-block section that drains 80 acres, so I don't think a 42-inch pipe, half of that, isn't really fair either. You know, I'd be willing to pay half of an 18-inch pipe.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
I'll try it again, I'm still Robert Peterson, and I still live at 20985 Rawhide Road in Elkhorn slash Omaha. I don't think very many people are aware that this resolution is before the council today. I became aware of reading something in the paper on Saturday, and I looked through the agenda yesterday, and I didn't follow my, my law instructor's instructions because I didn't read it all. I read down to 21 and thought, well, that really doesn't apply to where I live. Well, as I read down to 34, this is exactly what I was opposed to, was a one-size-fit-all deal here. I moved and built my home in 19, or 1981. We were an SID at the time, we had special assessments, we assessed for our road, we were assessed for, for our water, and we had asphalt streets. During that time, SID maintained our asphalt streets, and when we were annexed in 2005, Elkhorn maintained our asphalt streets. It's a basic premise of municipal law that the city or municipality has the obligation to maintain their streets. And what this does here, in my opinion, is kicking the city's obligation out to people who had, have no control over what you did, particularly in this annexation. We have paid the same wheel tax, and we've paid the same levy-on-tax for the city of Omaha as everybody else has. And I guess my primary question is, what's wrong with the asphalt streets? What's wrong with just maintaining them as asphalt streets? We're an equestrian subdivision, we've got lots that are as big as three acres. It doesn't fit the pattern urban lots like we're talking about here. I mean, up my street, which is three-quarters of a mile, we probably have six houses. And for you to come in and say, "Okay, now, we're, we're going to pay 25% if you want to just maintain your asphalt street, and then after that, you're on your own," I mean, that's an abdication of the city's responsibility as far as I'm concerned. If you're going to abdicate that responsibility, then at least turn the wheel tax back to us so we can maintain our own. But for, just to come in, I look at this, I think, just, the shot is arbitrary, you say, "Well, we'll do 25%." Who picked that number? And you're going to do 75%? Then we're going to apply a different standard for different parts of the city? I think you've got a, a problem with this, with this resolution. And I'd like to at least have you consider laying it over until we have a little bit of discussion. I don't think many people know about this. If, and I wouldn't have if I hadn't read it in the paper. I just, I would ask that, I think it's arbitrary, it's discriminatory, and it's contrary to what the law is. You're required to maintain the streets. And I think what you're trying to do is an abdication of that responsibility.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Luis Jimenez, 3126 Chicago Street. A little bit cold, so bear with me. I think the gentleman that spoke before him is correct. Got another missing element, I think. We need an advocate for the property owners, taxpayers of the city. You know, back in the past, you used to have the city and local municipalities or what have you would get lump sums from the federal government. I'm thinking that we should go back to that system where the feds would give lump sum to, let's say Omaha, and we could just, the city could distribute that funding how it needs to be distributed according to needs of the infrastructure. So I would hope that if this passes, that the mayor would be an advocate. She could talk to, I don't know, Senator DeFisher, Senator Ben Sasse, Representative Don Bacon, the mayor, and say, "Hey, we need some money." But she's not doing that for some reason, I don't believe she is. And if she is, I don't think it's enough advocacy. So, you know, and I don't trust this new administration over in DC, one bit, to provide an infrastructure initiative that could help us out here in Omaha. I think if, if the current administration would pass such initiatives, it would be a bait and switch. More money for the people who already have the money. Infrastructure spending goes directly to the ground, to the infrastructure, to the city, to the space. And I would hope that the mayor would be wise enough to demand lump sum, lots of money for infrastructure from the feds wherever the city can get it, besides squeezing out of hard-working people who are already trying to get along with their lives, with their finances, with their bills, with their work, and then to have to come here and deal with, oh, well, 25%, 50%. I think that it's, it's, it's not necessary. I think the old system was good. So, we need an advocate. And I hope the mayor will do that, will play that role. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Proponents wish any rebuttal?
Bob Stube, Public Works. Just want to address Mr. Peterson and his concerns. So, the policy doesn't eliminate street maintenance from having the responsibility to maintain that particular section of roadway that he lives on. There comes a point in time that if the street is, again, is not a standard street, then the potential is, is that this policy would come into play from the standpoint of giving the residents out in that particular area an option for improving that street. If there's a decision that they don't want to improve that street, there's other options that are available also from the standpoint of reclaiming, returning it to some type of gravel road or something like that. But it doesn't eliminate our responsibility to continue to maintain that street.
Okay, thank you. Public, well, the writing out of public area is closed because we got some others right now. Mr. Jarrett?
Thank you. I was trying to write down Mr. Stube's quote, and, and my light got caught before I think I was ready, but I think I just heard he said that it, the policy comes into play in his view on what I just heard him say, where the, where the Public Works Department would cease maintaining a road when, in the opinion of the inspector from the Public Works Division, an inspection is done on a road that is either substandard or unimproved, and in the opinion of that inspector, it reaches the end of its useful life, serviceable life. Now, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Peterson, and I heard this repeatedly as I was going door-to-door in the Old Loveland area, the Ridgewood area, the Christ of King area, where numerous residents at their door this past spring said, "We don't understand why the city, when we pay our property taxes, our restaurant taxes, our wheel fees, why we don't get our roads maintained because we happen to be in an area that was annexed 40 years ago, 50 years ago, and somehow the city's obligation to repair these roads ended three years ago in the, in the opinion of the Public Works Department." So I had hoped, as this policy was developed, there would be some recognition that there are certain maintenance obligations of the city which we have to perform within the expectations of, of our society. And what this says is that there comes a point where the Public Works Department is asking for the pass to say, "No more, no mas." And to, as a way to then encourage the people who live on those streets to bear a significant portion of the expense to bring it up to standard. And whether that's right or wrong, I don't know. My personal opinion is, is that there's just something not right about it. So I don't know if the city were sued, like one group did in just west of 78th in Pacific, between 78th and 84th Street, there was a block, a couple of residents sued the city last year, I believe, and then magically they got a new concrete street. I don't know what the settlement was. Actually, I think it was concrete, it's the Simon Block.
It's not concrete?
No. All right, well, my recommendation was, my, my recollection's wrong then, it's asphalt. Somehow they got a street. And then in walking that other area, I noticed there were other streets done, and there were sewers being put in, and they were different sizes. None of them seemed to be the 42-inch, which I don't know the size of that TV in front of us here, but, you know, it's roughly that size is what their standards that are proposed here today that people have to pay half the cost of. So, I have some questions that I want to go through, and speaking about this, it, it says here in, in the policy, Mr., either one of you want to come up if you have your policy with you, Mr. Stube or Mr. Fitzer? Want you to go over and say it here. I'll ask a general question to keep it moving then.
Sure, we got three of those, we're going to...
When the city annexes subdivisions, a part of the annexation is a 10-year cost estimate that has to at least be balanced out at zero, no negative loss. You're aware of that, right?
Yes, Bob Stube, Public Works.
And a part of the assessment that the city undertakes when it does annexations is to evaluate, among other things, the streets in that subdivision, correct?
Correct.
And part of the process includes, in areas where, like Mr. Peterson lives, before there's an annexation, are these standard streets, substandard streets, improved or unimproved, correct?
Correct.
Do you remember when Mayor Suttle was the mayor, there had been a subdivision proposed for annexation that was later removed north of Wenninghoff's farm by the Sorensen Freeway because at the time it was said that we looked at the roads, they're substandard, and the cost to bring them up to standard would make this subdivision not cost out at net zero or positive in the 10-year period?
I don't recall that. We'd probably have to go back into the records and look. I mean, there's, there's obviously subdivisions that we've annexed over the years that we've not taken on the responsibility for the streets. One is in Councilmember Melton's area, so that's been something that's been done in the past.
But getting to the bigger question of the areas of the city that are annexed that have situations like that particular one did at the time, like Mr. Peterson has, what element of full faith and credit is in the government when the citizenry can have this annexation, an evaluation of, of the condition of the streets, and then no incentive of the city to really do anything other than wait out the clock in terms of getting a PESR rating on a street so that they can try to evade responsibility? I mean, if, don't we look at annexation over the costs of bringing these seats, these streets to city standards?
I don't believe that we include that evaluation to take a substandard street and to essentially cost it out to, to bring it under a standard. I mean, obviously, that would, there'd be some cost associated with doing that, and it's not the intent on the city's part to go in there and annex them and then turn around and to, to make their street a standard. Once again, as I mentioned previously, if there's streets that don't meet standards that the city has annexed, we will continue to maintain those streets. But over a period of time, which is, has happened in numerous locations, is that those streets were never designed to handle a long life associated with traffic, and therefore they become a point where the cost to maintain is 10 times greater than what it would be and what we would consider as a, as a standard concrete street. And so that's where that, that, kind of that balance comes in, where you have to look at and say, "Something else has to be done."
Okay, so let's, let's get to some of these clauses. If you could, let's get to this PESR rating. Would you confirm for me that the current practice in the department is that you have one person who goes around the city and scores the, these streets that are in, that would be within this policy?
Todd Fitzer, Public Works. That is the goal of our, within Public Works, is to have a consistent evaluation, as I mentioned...
Is it, is it more than one person today? Is it the foreman for each district that goes around and inspects, or is it one person for the city?
The goal is to have it be one person for the city that, that does the PESR ratings.
What's the practice today?
I would have to double-check that, I don't have that answer at this time.
This gets to the concern that the PESR rating you get happens to rely upon the inspector you draw, whether, in the lens through which that person views the condition of the streets in applying the PESR standard. So, if you had by district, and there, are there five Public Works districts?
Yeah, correct.
So let's just say you had one in each district, you had a person going around in each district that's different from the other, and each applying their own view of the world and what's, you know, how they apply the standard, you could have five different conclusions looking at similar-conditioned streets. So I'm worried about subjectivity. And even more so, if it's one person for the city, if you happen to get someone who's very strict constructionist, so to speak, or very fiscally conservative, you may, you may have someone who says, "Okay, well, this one's a PESR rating four or higher because, you know, things are kind of tight at the city right now, and we want the taxpayers to pay this rather than, who live on the street rather than the rest of the city." Or conversely, you could have a real softie inspector who goes around the city and has very low PESR ratings, and thereby you get the city then having the orange trucks go in and taking care of the streets. So, I'm concerned about subjectivity, and whether that's, could happen or not, or would happen or not. I think you confirmed, you acknowledge, whether it's one person who you'd hope would apply the same standard equally and fairly, there is an element of subjectivity whether you have the one person or more, correct?
Yeah, I think that's part of the reason why that we've taken a position with the development of the new policy is that we're going to, we're going to go in and actually do maintenance on sections of roadway, identify what those PESRs are, and then notify the property owners with regard to kind of the process that's being, that's in front of you today to establish that framework moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Kratz?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. Yes, sir.
It, would it be a correct summary to recite state law that basically provides that when the city receives notice of a defect in a roadway, the city then has afforded a reasonable opportunity to go inspect and repair the condition before liability generally attaches to the city if it fails to do so?
That's correct, that's probably not the exact language, but something similar. And if I may add something, in your proposed amendment that recites some of that language, you go on further to add that the city, let's see, "Repair such roadway defects or conditions constitute risk of serious injury or property damage to persons using such roadways." I'm concerned that that, part of that, your amendment, might create additional liability to the city over and above what the state statute says.
Well, we could talk about... Well, we could talk about the amendment when we get to the amendment.
Yeah.
Not the amendment yet, but I do appreciate the preemptive opportunity you took in which to try to defeat the amendment.
I'll talk whenever I can, Mr. Jones.
I know that. You're a skilled advocate. I wish there was some element of bilateral advocacy when it comes to the legislative branch as well as the executive branch. Thank you. In terms of the city, I'm concerned that if you have a street in an area like Mr. Peterson's or an area like Mr. Palmer's, and the city says, "Well, your PESR rating is four or higher." And in Mr. Palmer's case, the city ground up the street, and they grade it twice a year. In your case, if it's a four or more, they just stop, and then potholes develop. And those potholes, depending on their size and their condition, how long between a grading in your case, or in your case, if you get the PESR rating and they just don't fill them, at what point does the city then risk... And the risk becomes so great that if, for example, a motorcycle were to go into one of those and roll or flip, and someone, you know... Hopefully, this wouldn't happen, but if it were to happen, and say that person becomes a quadriplegic, I just question the efficacy of a policy which would not spend any on maintenance in the short term and then risk paying on a claim for a quadriplegic if liability were determined to attach under the Political Subdivision Tor Claims Act multiple millions up to the cap, I guess, of a million for the city. At what point does that not make sense to have that policy? So we're risking liability. And I think I heard this morning from City Legal that, well, the city would have a defense to that because we'd say it was a discretionary function. We knew there was a hazard. We chose not to do it because this is the way we decided to spend the money. But I don't think we know that until and unless there's a claim. And I think it would be a matter of time if... Until such happened. And I worry about the safety of the people traveling our streets, as well as the substantial damage that can happen to their cars if they're not maintained. Section 1H, Roman numeral two or 2I, talks about the... In line four, it talks about the improvement consists of a twenty... This is for the Street Improvement District, the permanent concrete part, for those listening. Consists of a twenty-foot... Twenty-five-foot standard width and a storm sewer size if sewers are installed not to exceed forty-two-inch maximum sewer side. Well, I think that my concern with that forty-two-inch-sized pipe is it's, again, maybe well-intentioned, but it's not what... I mean, I heard this morning, there's twenty-four-inch size, there's thirty-six-inch size, there's forty-two-inch size, and then there's bigger than even that. And I just think forty-two-inch size, given the cost it takes to put in that type of pipe, is laying too much of the fifty percent cost burden on the people who live on those streets. And we just happen to have an example of that here today with the Ridgewood people, that the city seeks fifty percent cost share up to whatever the size of the sewer is because there's no policy. It could be sixty inches. Who knows? And that SID would get fifty percent. And if this passes, groups that come after, still forty-two inches to me is big. So I would like to see that amended to make that smaller, twenty-four inches, if I could. Then we talk about the practice of turning our backs on maintaining anything. And I think there should be provision where if the city got notice of a condition, the city would have to go out and inspect the condition, have opportunity to grade it or to patch it if the condition presented a risk of serious bodily injury or substantial property damage to the people who are using the roadway. And that could be in multiple sections, whether it's 1F, 1H... Excuse me, 1E, 1F. But then, when you get down to section five, this goes to the rigidity of the policy in terms of the very limited exceptions. If section five is on cost sharing, and when you have a cost share that allows for the reduction for the census tract areas of high poverty, and depending on the level, whether you have a fifteen percent reduction or more, that's to be applauded. I don't know in practical operation how effective that'll be in some of the neighborhoods where poverty is so high that even at such a big reduction, they'll ever be able to afford it. But that's a bigger question than I can answer today, or I'm sure you can answer today.
Yeah.
But I think what I'd like to talk about is the absence for an opportunity within the policy to allow petitioning groups to try to show some other extraordinary set of circumstances which exist in their particular SID to give the petitioners the opportunity to be heard and then seek additional cost share up to another fifteen percent in other circumstances that don't include poverty. Because you heard at some point, no matter how affluent you may think the area is, and maybe the people who came today from Ninety-Fourth and Oak who said, "Hey, you know, we're willing to pay, but there's limits because we're hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-twenty or forty-thousand-dollar houses." And then you have the people on Ridgewood, some of these houses are probably double or more of that evaluation, but we still have limits in our resources when it becomes cost prohibitive. And there's these other circumstances, like you heard of the drainage, where under this policy, there's no other basis or opportunity within the policy for them to seek additional assistance. And I think if there were something in the policy that were amended in that will allow the catch-all... If you think you've got an exception, extraordinary circumstances, you can apply. Department can make a recommendation. Ultimately, comes the council, and if four or more of us say yes, we agree, we can do additional cost shares as the circumstances justify.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Thank you. With regard to poverty, that was something that the group did discuss quite a bit about. And it becomes very difficult to be able to make that determination as far as what that split is. And so obviously, the group came up with what's in policy today. One of the big concerns that, you know, is part of the discussion also, were a lot of these individuals that are living there are probably renters. And so you have absentee owners, and so it becomes difficult to be able to apply that policy in that particular case. Obviously, the people that are living there that are potentially renting those spaces probably want an improvement of their street, but the property owner that's absentee is probably going to look at it and say, "No, I'm not going to be saddled with that particular cost." So it becomes a difficult situation. With regard to, you know, looking at other circumstances, there's no question, and I think I indicated this in my letter to Mr. Palmer, is that we've run into that in numerous locations where everybody believes that they have a unique situation. We ran into that situation on One Hundred Thirteenth Street, where the residents there, and I think Todd can attest to this, that some lived on the downhill side, and so they were getting sheet flow coming across from the neighbors on the other side. And they said, "Well, we want you to fix, you know, our area and the ones on the other side." Well, they didn't have that particular issue. So every situation is different, and we try to bring that into account when we sit down with the property owners and say, "What do you want to have included in this particular project? Do you want to have all the costs included? Or do you want to look at potentially separating some of those things out so that, you know, it becomes an individual assessment to that property owner that's impacted by it?"
Right.
It does become difficult.
I understand that. And by the way, I mean, one thing I haven't done yet, which should be done, is to thank your department, you, Heather, Todd, the committee, the mayor's office and her administration for trying to tackle this issue in a way that, in your view and the view of the committee, came up with a more equitable situation as you saw it. So thank you for the time and effort that you all put in. I would add to your thanks that you had to the committee. So before I forget, I wanted to do that. But I think part of what I see on that item five, other extraordinary circumstances, I think there's the opportunity to have more room within this policy for the department to have a process that could be encompassed within this, to generally show... Or for them to allow the petitioners the opportunity to show that it prevents you and then we're the appeal, where they could be... It's the opportunity to be heard and have their... The merits of their claim addressed, both administratively by the department and then on appeal to us, what is not in here that I'd like to see. I'm sure there'll be others that have more questions. I don't have any more questions for you now, but you probably don't want to wander too far. So the last thing I wanted to say is, when proposals like this come to us for public hearing on vote one day, I thought about some amendment ideas that I put together that I think I would like the opportunity to further explore in terms of refining them to address these things. If I have to vote today, my vote will be no because I think there's just too many things like Mr. Peterson and Mr. Palmer and what I talked about that are not in here that, at least, I'd like to be considered to be in here. But I think if we laid it over for a couple of weeks, we could talk more about this, get more information on these pipe sizes, on maintenance for hazards and for extraordinary circumstance relief and cost sharing. So with that, I'll yield.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I do want to thank you for your work and the committee for their work on this. It is a complicated issue and a very large issue, a three-hundred-million-dollar issue facing the city that I know we're trying to establish a point to start. So I think you did a nice job kind of walking through the policy in your presentation, but I just wanted to emphasize a few things I want to make sure people understand. So when we talk about road maintenance districts, which is the asphalt, if a neighborhood pursue that avenue, that's a one-time deal, one-time cost share. You cannot do that again, right?
Bob Stube, Public Works. That is correct. And part of the reason why that we did that, what the policy or what the committee looked at, was a way of... And I think the discussion has taken place on this council previously, is a way to look at incentivizing people to go to the Street Improvement District route because, obviously, that is a permanent solution, that we don't have to get into this situation where asphalt streets that exist in some of those locations were never designed to handle long-term traffic loads, and the fact that they're not designed to address drainage and things like that will deteriorate. And so, obviously, having a concrete street with a full engineering system is the best solution.
Mm-hmm. But if you did asphalt, like you say, it's a short-term maintenance, that agreement with the city essentially to maintain that for its serviceable life, which sometimes is ten years, sometimes it's fifteen years, sometimes a little bit longer, where you would fill potholes and do those kind of things, but once it's past its serviceable life, you would no longer do that, and the neighborhood would be out of options, right? What options would they have at that point?
Options that they would have at that point are a number of things. One is that, which are available today, is that we've had situations where citizens have taken upon themselves to essentially hire a contractor to do something that's minimal. We've had situations where residents have opted for more like a chip seal. We've had situations where residents have agreed to do a reclamation project, where we go in and actually grind up, you know, deteriorated asphalt and return it to a granular surface so that we can, again, do that regular maintenance, which typically is the spring and the fall of the year. So there's still... Those options are still available.
Mm-hmm. And like you say, though, that doesn't address the long-term issue we're trying to address here, and that's why you've incentivized a concrete approach.
Correct.
Although it might be more affordable, it's not a long-term solution. So if a neighborhood then instead pursues the SID, which is the concrete solution, that is a long-term maintenance deal, whereas if they did that, the city then takes over maintenance for that street for the... Forever, in terms of putting it on the city's resurfacing program when needed and will maintain that in that respect.
That is correct.
And that's more expensive, but we also have recently pursued a change in state law that allows it to be paid off over twenty years.
That is correct.
For individual homeowners. Talk about the assessment a little bit, just so people know. So there was a comment today about, "Well, they're on a corner lot, and that does make it more complicated, more difficult for some people." But typically, those kind of issues, practical issues, are ones that get addressed not so much in this policy, but in the actual formation of their own district, right?
Heather Tippie, Paris Public Works. The assessment process, as is outlined in this policy, basically allows us for the flexibility to use statistical methodology and other proven metrics approved by state law to address things like corner lots and double-stacked lots and things of that nature. So per the direction of this policy, sample assessments would be provided at the time a petition is checked out, so the neighborhood had a better idea of kind of how that could work for their neighborhood. But should they come up with another metric other than property valuation, that's been specifically struck down in the court system, and the neighborhood agreed to it, we would certainly yield to the neighborhood's desires in our recommendation to the Board of Equalization, as did happen with Ninety-Fifth Circle.
Okay. So there's flexibility in how that would be handled, and probably on a case-by-case neighborhood with how the neighborhood chooses to form their district?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then the assessment itself, let's say it is a twenty-year assessment for the SID. Those assessments stay with the property, right? Not the property owner?
That is correct. It is considered a special benefit district, so it's a little bit different than other types of assessment, and it does convey with the property. So unless the property owner negotiated as a part of the contract of the sale, escrowing the money or something like that, the assessment would just transfer from owner to owner.
So this is the kind of thing that real estate agents need to know about to... Because that would have to be disclosed in any kind of property sale and...
That's correct. Once a district is formed, it does have to be disclosed.
Okay. And then talk about what we're calling non-standard streets now. If they choose to be a non-standard street or if it exceeded their serviceable life, I think there's provision that talks about grinding up to two years if they chose to pursue that?
Bob Stube, Public Works. Again, yes, that is an option to the residents that live on that section of roadway, is that, again, they could use a contractor to do the repairs, they could ask us to go in and reclaim that street and put it on a regular maintenance cycle. So that is, again, an option available to the residents.
And even if they are non-standard and choose to stay that way, you will still do either the grinding or some patching or some pothole corrections for the serviceable life, at least of that street?
As I mentioned previously, if there's a street out there that is a non-standard street, that's an asphalt street, that might be fifteen, twenty years old, it's still in good condition, we will continue to maintain that street. But it comes down to a point in time where that street has exceeded its serviceable life, and we have to look at that and say, "Do the taxpayers really expect us to pay ten times more to maintain that particular street than we would if we ran a different one that met standards?"
Okay. Thank you for those clarifications. And I want to talk about equity a little bit, too, because that concerns me also in this discussion. Because when we talk about the scoring system, and there has to be some kind of scoring system, so I know you're trying to devise a method about doing that, it's essentially equal weight, this PESR evaluation we have, and then equal weight in terms of its location, connectivity, and connection to schools and things like that, which I think makes some sense. But the concern I can see is that, you know, from a practical perspective, that it's unlikely to prioritize neighborhoods like Florence or Keystone, where I have a lot of these streets. I know there's a value you place if they've been in the queue for a long time, where they can build up some equity in terms of prioritization. I think it's one point a year. But that would take a long time, in some respects, I could see, to have some situations, I think primarily east of Seventy-Second Street, rising to the occasion of maybe more connected streets that have happened west of Seventy-Second Street. For example, today, my... A street in my district that was approved earlier, and I'm glad it was approved, is Eighty-Ninth Circle, but that's a cul-de-sac. Under this new policy, that likely wouldn't have risen to the top. So in some respects, we're lucky they were approved today. So you can see how these factors come into play, and they may or may not produce an equitable result. they may or may not produce an equitable result in practice as we proceed here. And affordability is part of that, too. So, I agree, although you've made provisions for that, you had to make some kind of provision for that. I don't think a census tract that's 30% poverty is going to be able to come up with 50% nor 35% to do a street like this. So, that concerns me, too. So, where I'm going with those observations is, as we get into this, presuming this is approved, there is a method by which this can be amended going forward. Should we be experiencing concern about equity and how this unfolds from a practical perspective, correct?
Yes. And just a, previously, we were working under an existing policy, and so, anything that's been taken to you today has been a waiver of City Council. And there's a potential that if you run into a situation like you're talking about from an equity perspective, and if there's an issue with the residents being able to pay for that, that obviously would then be a waiver of the existing policy, but it would have to come in front of you to address that particular situation. I do want to clarify one thing when it comes to prioritization also. It comes down to is that that only comes into effect when there's not enough, when there's more projects than actual budget available. So, if there's a number of projects, if we have a certain budget on an annual basis, and there's a number of projects that come forward to essentially address that particular budget, we don't have to worry about prioritization. It only comes into effect when you have more projects than actual funding available.
If I could just expound on that momentarily, Todd Fitzher. We really don't have any idea when this policy gets approved. If we're going to get 20 applications a year or 100 applications a year, we just don't know. So, we had to come up with a scoring system. But I just wanted to emphasize what the director said, and that is, if we have 10 and we have enough money for 10, then the scoring system isn't even going to be looked at. We'll just do those projects. But we have to have some way, should we get more projects than we have available budget, to prioritize those. That was the intent.
And you make that evaluation each year, right?
Yes.
Based on the funding you have?
That's correct.
And that's a good segue to the last point I wanted to make before I yield the floor, too. But before I do, I just want to say, so, in amending the policy, if we have concerns how this starts to unfold from a practical perspective, there can be waivers involved, but there also could be an actual amendment of this by the City Council or the mayor, as the official policy.
I would say yes.
Would Paul Kratz agree with that, too?
Paul Kratz would agree with that, yes.
I think that's important to observe, because, you know, this is a complicated policy we're dealing with, and there's lots of practical considerations in individual areas, like we found today, where it may or may not work well. And so, it needs to be flexible going forward. And if changes are needed, we need to be able to make those changes, to make this an equitable solution for people. The last point I want to make is the direction you were just going in terms of funding. So, I don't think, as you observed, I don't think we know how many products will come in, but I think more products will come in than we have funding available for. That's already happened today. We just exhausted all of our funding we had for 2017 to address the backlog of products we have, and then some. It's already dipped into the 2018 availability. So, if we're encouraging SIDs and concrete products, and we are, those are very expensive. And so, that could be maybe four or five projects a year, where the city is able to provide the 50% funding match, if all we have is 800,000 or even 1.5 million in the CIP to do that. So, I want to make the point that this is a step in the right direction, I think, and we're trying to find a place to start on a $300 million challenge that exists throughout our city. But I don't want anybody to think that if we pass this, that we're done working on this, because although this may be a policy and a method by which to go about doing this, it's only as good as the funding available to execute it. And right now, I don't think there's enough funding to do that in coming years. And there's certainly not enough funding to address the $800 million issue we have for streets throughout the city. So, I want to make sure that we're thinking about that after today, and that we're, I think it's going to require a bigger solution for multiple sources of funding to start making a dent on all of these issues. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Melton?
Yeah, I do have a question. First of all...
New phone line.
There. Thank you. But I know that there are people at home that have called in and said they've had trouble hearing us. I want to make sure that they can hear us. I want to, first of all, I want to thank you. We've had multiple meetings with the Public Works Committee on this. So, as I told the mayor earlier, I do appreciate all the work that you've put into this, that Councilman Thompson put into this before he left the council. And what I really like about how this policy was created was it wasn't just the group in the city. He went out to other leaders and people in our community. So, we even had, I think Senator McColister was a part of this. Other people who have lived on these streets were brought in to be a part of this. And I think that's it, you just really set an example for how we need to create policies moving forward in the future. Because that, bringing that number of people in and the people, stakeholders, so to speak, and other community leaders, sort of just kind of taking a policy, drafting it, and sending it to us, I just thought this was a really great way to think about it. So, I don't want people to think, well, they just arbitrarily chose these numbers. Well, I think the number of people involved in this, I don't necessarily think it was arbitrary at all. And you actually thought about issues that I hadn't necessarily thought about before when this issue was presented to us. So, I think there's a number of things in here that I really appreciated, that I hadn't thought of. I think the one thing that I'm just a little confused about, and I wasn't aware of it in any of our previous meetings, was this requirement or the cost share for the additional sewer pipe. So, if you have, if you have a neighborhood that there is going to be a lot of water, and the city says, no, we want that bigger 42-inch, it was my understanding, though, you weren't going to charge the neighbors anything over the standard pipe. So, you would charge them for what the standard pipe is, and then the city would pay for that additional. Was I incorrect, or were you just saying that's a possibility, but we don't have it in the policy?
Yeah. It's in the policy that we will not charge the street improvement district, we will not charge the property owners affected by it for a sewer pipe that exceeds 42-inch. So, that is in the policy.
Well, and I think that's probably where, when I go to the policy, I don't think the language is clear enough.
Okay.
So, that may be something that we just need to clarify in the language.
We can tweak that.
But I think maybe it should be something that we wouldn't, I mean, maybe pick 30, like the middle or something like that. 42, I mean, what's the difference in a cost between 25 and 42?
Typically, probably just be material costs. You still have to have the equipment out on the job site anyway. You've still got to dig a trench.
Right.
So, normally, it would probably be the material cost. But we have unit price that we get for a lot of projects, so that's something that we can take a look at and see what that difference is between the different classes of pipe.
And, sir, I think that, forgive me for forgetting, I think that's one of the issues that you have for your neighborhood, correct? It's that we're okay with paying the standard price, but we would like help if we have to do something extra that's going to benefit everybody. We would want help with that. And I'm not sure that that was clear earlier. So, that's something that you're still willing to look at, whether we would have passed 21 with his neighborhood in place or not. You're saying that anything that you're going to require from a neighborhood that would be over and above standard, that's not necessarily their fault or part of the road, you would consider then having some additional cost share.
Again, we would always work with the stakeholders in the particular area and make a determination as far as what is all the improvements are going to be included in that particular project. And so, those are typically the costs then that we would share equally with those stakeholders. Now, if there's things that are, again, known and unknown, that have to be evaluated, that's something potentially that could come into consideration. But normally, going into it, storm sewers are traditionally a part of a concrete street, whether you're living in a...
Right. No, I mean, I think, I think we all know that. We get that. The issue at hand is, if it's above and beyond standard, because other people that aren't included in this, the water's coming down, and you, I mean, here's, I think where my frustration and Councilman Darren's frustration is, we've heard you say, yes, that's something that if we've got to do something bigger that's going to benefit more than the people on the street, we are willing to put in those extra costs. And it's just today, I guess, the talking around it is what, maybe is what we're confused about.
Todd Fitzher, Public Works. I'm going to, I'm going to try to clarify this without talking around it. The 42-inch, this was brought up with the Citizens Advisory Committee, and this specific concern. So, I had Austin Rousler, who has experience with laying out subdivisions, go out and research some subdivision layouts with the city, pull as-built plans on older ones, look at newer ones that are going on, and try to come up with, well, we don't have a standard pipe. It's important to, I guess, let me start with that. We don't just say, when we build a subdivision, we put in a 14-inch pipe. That doesn't exist. I mean, it's all based on the size of lots, the way that the drainage works, a number of different factors. So, we tried to go in and pick, and that's where the 42-inch size came from, pick a size pipe that reflects an average size within a subdivision, some of the larger pipes that are carrying water, so that if, and, let me, let me continue with that. Try and put this out in a, in a way that's easy to understand. If it exceeds what would be considered a standard or a normal operating size, and the city acknowledges that that cost difference should be borne by the city, that we would, in the case of Ridge U, for example, let's say we come back and we determine that it needs a 48-inch pipe. We'd say, okay, the cost of a 42-inch pipe was X. The city's going to pay the difference, 100% of the difference, because that's above and beyond what we would consider normal. And let me back you up to the example in here of the 25-foot wide street. One of these citizens, advisory folks, said, you know, we have neighborhoods that are concerned that if the city comes in and says, hey, we think this needs to be a three-lane wide street, so this is great, we'll get the neighbors to pay for half of it. So, we said, okay, well, we'll address that. Then the standard neighborhood's street width is 25 feet. So, you see that provision in this policy, that if the street width exceeds 25 feet, that that's 100% on Public Works. We'd never ask the neighborhood. The pipe size and the thought behind that was the exact same process, that we want to come up with what we feel like is a standard operating size, and if it's anything that exceeds that, the city acknowledges that we would, we would pay that additional. And I've heard sizes thrown out anywhere from 18 to 24 to 36. And at this point, we're just throwing out numbers. But the 42-inch number that you see in here did have some research and some thought put in behind it. And I agree very much with the director. We can provide you with some unit prices to show you per lineal feet, what a 24-inch, what a 36, what a 48-inch, 42-inch pipe cost, how many lineal feet we put in last year. It'll give you some idea of what's being put in and what the costs are. Be very happy to pull that together.
Another example would be, an individual might be living in a...
For the record, your name, Bob, again?
Bob Stube, Public Works. Within a sanitary improvement district, that might be living at the top of a hill. They don't have a storm sewer that's in front of their house, but they paid for the storm sewers within that district that was created.
Right.
So, you have those differences that exist out there all over the place.
Well, no, and I understand. I just think that that language maybe needs to be a little more clear in here, because what you're saying and what I read, it don't seem, at least to the average person, to match up. So, and I appreciate that, and that's kind of what I, I thought that's what I had heard before. So, I appreciate that, and I think that people who live in, on those streets that are maybe looking for that appreciate that, too. And I do think that there are things that maybe we need to think about and amend as we move forward. Sometimes you have to get a policy like this in place, and then kind of figure out some of the, some of the kinks, and then come back and make those amendments. And so, what I would really appreciate is that you, we continue with some open dialogue as these projects move forward. And we, I would like some suggestions from you as we move forward. And I know Heather probably always has suggestions, because she's the one working one-on-one with the neighborhoods. But I'd like to work together to try and address those as we move forward. I don't think amendments are admitting mistakes. I think amendments are, how can we make something better? And so, what I don't want to do is really delay this policy too much longer. And I think, Ms. Tippi Pierce, I think you have something that maybe you want to add to this.
Heather Tippi Pierce, Public Works. I think that, that comment is absolutely reflected in this policy and the experiences that we've had over the last two seasons of these petitions and creating these districts, which is why I would refer you to the very last section of the policy, which addresses exactly how we would make minor tweaks, when we would make them, and when full amendments would then need to come before the body.
Okay, thank you. So, you've even...
It's already anticipated in the...
Contemplated it, all right. All right. Well, thank you. No, I really do. I appreciate, I appreciate all of the work. And hopefully, people just understand how the process works, that we're not mandating that people actually pick an RMD or an SID. This is just here for those people that live on unimproved roads that want to do something about their road. Because I think the letter I at least got from a constituent, it sounded like they thought, as soon as we pass this, they were going to get the letter saying, pick one, and that that's not the case at all. So, hopefully, when this is reported, it'll be reported correctly, so that people know they're not being forced to do this. These are just options, and we never had the option of us paying for it before until now. What do other cities do in this situation?
Heather Tippi Pierce, Public Works. As a part of the work of the task force, that question was posed to me. And I did some, as much research as I could, talked to a lot of city engineers. It kind of spans the gambit. As far as the cost-sharing structure that the committee came up with, it's definitely on the more generous end of what other municipalities and counties dealing with unimproved streets do. Many, many of the areas that I looked at have either a tax, a fee, or 100% assessment used to cover the cost. So, the city may come in and do neighborhood roadways as a part of the capital improvement district, but they had to seek an increase in the gas tax to do so, or they assess a transportation fee to do so. By bonding this and then putting it as a part of the overall CIP structure in a cost-sharing matrix, we're one of the rare exceptions. And the 50-50 split on concrete streets is one of the higher ones of all of the cities. And I looked at all of the comparable cities that we usually use for collective bargaining, as well as cities of comparable size in metro area. Then I also took a look at counties that deal with asphalt streets like what we have. So, we looked at about 26 cities in metro areas.
Okay. And when you say that, you say that we're, this policy, we're actually contributing more than what other cities do, for the most part, on average?
For the most part, that's correct. Most of the cost-sharing examples that came in were born 20/80, 20% on the city or county, 80% on homeowners.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thank you. Not being a member of the Public Works Committee and recently being elected to this council, I would ask a little indulgence, if you wouldn't mind. And please, the three of you, if you would, stay up there. But first, I'd like to ask Mr. Kratz to respond to when Mr. Peterson said something about, he viewed this as an abdication of responsibility to maintain the streets. I just would like your, the city's reaction to that.
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. The way we view a couple of statutes is that we do not have absolute responsibility to keep every street in fine repair. There's a lot of discretion involved in how much money we have versus what we can spend on the streets. But I guess to that extent, I disagree with the statement.
Okay. Thank you. Then, for either one of you, the, at what level of street does this start? I mean, is it, I don't, I didn't, I don't think I saw within the policy where it defines at what level of street, meaning, you know, whether it's a thoroughfare or secondary.
Bob Stube, Public Works. So, this would apply to what typically would be a local or a residential street. Now, if you look at the federal functional classification, you have local streets, you have collector roads, and then you have arterial streets or major and minor. So, this would apply in the case of what we would consider as a local road. If you are a collector road or higher, then normally, that would fall under strictly the CIP and the improvements associated with those particular roads. So, for example, 84th Street, there's a lot of residents on that street.
Mm-hmm.
They did not get assessed. That was an unimproved road. It had ditches and things like that. That is 100% falling on the, being funded through transportation bonds, because it is considered as something higher than a local street.
Okay. So, can you, can you tell me if, does it say that anywhere in the policy? Because I don't remember seeing it anywhere in the policy as to the definition of...
If it's not, it's probably a good suggestion for us to go ahead and incorporate that in there.
Because one of the questions I get asked exactly, you know, like, what about 84th Street, or even Pacific Street, or some of those. But I don't remember seeing it in there, so I thought that was...
No, that's a good suggestion.
Then, could, and Todd, I'm sorry, earlier, I think you had said something about unimproved streets. I want to make sure that I understand, is an unimproved street the same thing as a substandard street?
Todd Fitzher, Public Works. Yes, I would use those terms. Yes, I would use those terms interchangeably. What we basically are referring to with that statement is a road that is not built to city standards.
Okay, thanks. And then, when a, now, I'll, I'll go to an example of, for example, the, in Skyline, where Skyline was an SID before it was annexed into the city, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so-
Well, Bob Stube, Public Works, I believe Elkhorn annexed-
I'm sorry.
The SID and then the city annexed two years later.
And then the city, right, okay. So when, but my, okay, so when, when Skyline was developed, the roads that were approved by the municipal jurisdiction, that being Elkhorn at the time, were, were the roads that were put in there considered city standard, or to that jurisdiction?
I, again, Bob Stube, Public Works, I don't know what Elkhorn's standards were at the time that their SIDs were developed.
Okay.
I can't speak to that.
Let me, allow me a little latitude here. So if they, if they were city standard according to, at the time, Elkhorn's city standards, would the residents not have an expectation that those would be maintained as, for the life of the, the road?
Again, we will continue to maintain those roads until they become a point where they are what we would deem as no longer serviceable. And then that's when we would, we would go through this effort of notifying the property owners. Skyline would probably be similar to a lot of other locations within the Omaha area where, whether it be Florence, or the Benson area, or South Omaha, that were communities at one time that eventually had their own improvements that took place, and then eventually they became part of the city of Omaha.
And, and so I'll go along a similar line of maybe what Mr. Jerem was asking earlier as well. When, when looking, and then when Omaha annexed Elkhorn, and I, and Cassie Pavin and I had some conversation about this earlier, and I, I think she's got some information to ask for now, but I haven't, haven't had a chance to see it or review it, but when, when the, when the city is looking at annexation packages, or taking in an area SID, I mean, a financial analysis is done, and, and roads are part of that consideration?
Cassie Pavin, Mayor's Office. Yes, as we do annexation packages, roads are a part of the consideration. In regards to the requests that we had discussed prior to City Council today in terms of when Elkhorn was annexed, I was able to pull up the Elkhorn annexation study that was done under the Fahey administration in two thousand and five, and I can provide a copy of this to you if you would like. But in that study, it specifically addresses streets, in that it starts on page seventeen of the study, but it goes through the number of lane miles that was associated with the city of Elkhorn at that time, which had approximately a hundred lane miles of streets. And part of that analysis that was done looked at street maintenance just as we would today in servicing that area and maintaining the streets in the Skyline Ranches area. It does not anywhere within this study that I've been able to find in the short time that we've discussed it, have any indication that it would take it from an asphalt street to what we would consider a city-standard street, nor can I explain what the thinking or logic or intent of the Fahey administration at that time under that annexation package was, just simply what I have for information.
Okay, yeah, I would like to get a copy of that, please. Let's see. Then Todd, I'm sorry, this, this, I think was addressed a little bit with, with your response to Mrs. Melton and Mr. Jerem, about the, making sure that we have language in here that would be, you know, when you're talking about the cost, if, if the cost is above certain, you've selected forty-two inches, that needs to be addressed. I kind of jokingly said to my colleague here that if it's less than forty-two, is there a rebate?
Well, Todd Fitzpatrick, Public Works, I, I guess that's an interesting question. If there's folks at the top of the hill that don't have to put in any drainage at all, should they contribute to help the folks at the bottom of the hill, or do we want to get into-
Well, and we, we already answered that.
You see what I'm saying, so.
Say that, that is in the, the whole of the package. What is, as long as you're up there, I think you can answer this. On the, on the assessment and the breakdown, if it's, you know, at five thousand, less than five thousand or greater than five thousand, is, is that for both RMD and SID?
It, it is not exclusive to RMD or SID, and I should perhaps let Heather answer this. It's more related to the amount, the dollar amount. But Heather has a breakdown of that dollar amount and how that's assessed.
Do I need to do anything more? So Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works, in working with the Law Department and the Finance Department, based on the changes to state statutes, and I, I think there's currently some work being done to amend the city ordinances to match. This is basically the monetary table, the breakdown that, based on the principal balance to the homeowner as to what the annual payment would be. As you can see, there's a breakpoint as to less than five thousand dollars, maximum we can charge per year is five hundred dollars. Above five thousand dollars, that then becomes the floor. That is applicable to all assessments, so not just RMDs, SIDs, it's also for sidewalks, sewers, any of those public improvements that convey special benefit district.
Okay, thank you. I, I too want to, again, being new to the, the council, understand the, the amount of work that's gone into, to getting us to this point today. That the one thing, or one of the issues that I've had with this, this resolution is, is that the first, I, I knew that it was coming on the agenda was, you know, yes, last Thursday afternoon, when I started getting some calls and emails from constituents and not having had a chance to look at the agenda yet. And it sure seems like there are still a number of questions or issues, and I know we can tweak the policy as we go along, but it also looks like, if I understand right, that there's, on this, being able to do that is according to the schedule that's also part of this policy, and I'm not sure how much flexibility that actually leaves in amending policy. So Todd, if you could-
I guess we didn't talk a little bit about this. Todd Fitzpatrick, Public Works, thank you, Brinker, for bringing that up. The schedule was developed, I've been working with this issue now for five or so years, and how it has worked to date is that we've gone to endless amounts of neighborhood meetings, somewhat as few as six or seven people there, involving myself and my staff, sometimes three nights a week, and it, it has become exhaustive to the point of being counterproductive. So one of the efforts in developing this schedule that you see here is that we went out to, and I'll just use the, the construction year 2019, and said, okay, if we want to get things built in 2019, how can we more efficiently use city staff to make this policy run smoothly? So we started backing away, if we want to start building in June of 2019, we need to let the project in April, and we need to have the final design done at this date. We started backing. So that's the schedule that you see here. With regard to specific changes in policy, I, I would suggest, using the Ridge U as an example, if, if those folks had an issue that they felt fell outside the policy, and they needed to bring it in, in front of you, that they would reach out to, in this case, Councilman Jerem, and would consider that. That, that certainly is not accounted for in this, in this particular schedule. What it might do in, in a case like that, if it involved a time to get on the agenda and to first reading and such, it might kick that project into the next year potentially. But I, I don't know, if you're going to look at individual requests like that, I, I don't know how you can build that time into a schedule unless we took the initial application date and moved it forward another three or four months to account for that, which we certainly can do. The schedule is not set in stone. What I would caution you, if you look at the schedule that's included in this policy, is that those construction dates, those beginning of construction dates are somewhat rigid. Obviously, we have to build things in the summertime. So if we're going to add something that might be six weeks or three months long, we will have to start moving those initial application dates forward in order to maintain that construction timeline.
Okay.
I hope I answered your question.
Yes, you did, thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Mr. Peterson, I think, if you'd come up, please?
I will.
I, I know, I saw, oh, sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Robert Peterson, 209-85-Rahid Road.
Thanks. I, I noticed when Mr. Stube had a chance to kind of rebut as a proponent, that you wanted to say something. I didn't know if you still had some questions that you wanted to, wanted to give you that opportunity to-
Well, one of the things that I don't think, that, when I read this, it appears that it's, it applies to a particular street. You know, we've got a street here that's not improved. The neighborhood I live in, the entire subdivision is what we're considering here as substandard streets. I visited with an engineer, because I do a lot of SID work. The estimate to do what this is called an SID, which he gave me, was a million dollars per lane mile to redo it. It's cost prohibitive in our neighborhood. It will be. I mean, to tear that up, I, I don't know what the problem is with our asphalt streets, but I could envision a situation where ultimately the city grinds up the streets. And I would disagree with Paul Kratz. If there's a street that's tore up and injures somebody that the city's aware of, they're going to be on the hook for it. I think the biggest failure of this thing that I see is that the city says, we're going to give you one bite at the apple on an RMD, and then you're on your own. That needs to be fixed. The city, if we do asphalt streets, the city needs to continue maintaining those streets, as far as I'm concerned. And that's an obligation of the city. And I think that's a failure in this policy.
Okay, thank you. So again, I, I want to thank all the work that had been done on this prior to, to my arrival here, but, you know, I, being new on the council, and what, I think I, I still continue to have some questions on this, and, and, you know, if it were up to me, I'd certainly like to see this issue laid over for some time, for some additional tweaks to be, to be worked out. But I guess that'll be, we'll, we'll see what the action is here, but I, I, I think some of these issues that Mr. Peterson's raised, as, as well as others, warrant some, some further investigation, and I'd like to take a look at, at that if, if given the opportunity. So with that, I'll turn it back. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Yeah, I, I think what we've heard is there's some ideas, constructive ideas, worthy of consideration to improve this, whether it be something as basic as delineating the street typologies to which this policy covers, to other things and clarifying this pipe size and, and others. And I, I would think that we could do those things and maybe coalesce as, as a council in two weeks. If I could suggest a layover in that amount, it would give us the opportunity to maybe improve the work product.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Festerson, you were up.
Thanks, Mr. President. I would support that layover, too. There is one short ques, question I forgot to ask, though, Mr. Fitz, pertaining to a specific project we're working on at the moment, Ames Avenue, and the redo of that street in Keystone. So that, that was not, it has its own unique set of circumstances, for sure. That was not included in Number Twenty-One, and so is one outstanding issue that hasn't been cleared off the deck yet. They have options in front of them right now to choose from. I don't know that they'll choose an RMD or an SID from those options, but should they do that, that can be accommodated within this year's budget, right?
I don't believe there's any room in this year's budget to do an RMD or an SID. As, as you spoke to earlier, we already have used up all of the seventeen budget and are into the eighteen budget, and that project is not included in that list. So that would be ultimately, I believe, up to the council, whether or not you wanted to take from the eighteen budget, should that project come in, and, and try to get it built this year.
And I think the communication we should make to them is that the answer is yes, because that's the one remaining thing that's been in the pipeline for quite some time now that wasn't resolved by Number Twenty-One. So my purpose in asking that was to make sure that, should they go that direction, we're aware that that's the one remaining outstanding project in this process that needs to get addressed, and should be eligible for two thousand and eighteen funding to get that done. Thank you.
Mr. Harding, did you have?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I failed, as I was thanking the Public Works Department and everyone, but I also wanted to acknowledge the, the mayor and the administration for moving forward on this action, as well as I went door-to-door and campaigned. Roads were certainly something that was brought up all the time. And I know, you know, this isn't a situation that was created overnight, it's a, a situation that's not going to be solved overnight, and I, I think to at least take the steps, the initial steps, to, to find a way to work through a, a solution that is the most equitable to all is certainly a, a valiant effort, and, and I want to make sure that we keep this momentum and work forward to finding a solution. Thanks.
Thank you. There are no further lights, and there's been a motion and a second to layover for two weeks. A couple of comments that I just want to make, very briefly, because we touched on neighborhoods where a number of those neighborhoods probably don't have, the homeowner doesn't live there, there's rental units and, and those, you know, people who live in rental units and, and where there are a number of empty lots and other things like that. I haven't heard that addressed as specifically as some of the other things, so those are some of the things that I would want to know as well as we move forward. So I'll be asking you questions along those lines. But again, the, there has been a motion and a second to layover for two weeks, there's no further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Meeting adjourned at four twenty-nine PM.